Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission for the City of Claussen for Tuesday, August 14th, 2018. I'd like to open the meeting at 7:30. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Audia?
Here.
Ms. Fenton? Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Cussera?
Here.
Mr. McHale?
Here.
Ms. Prowse?
Here.
Ms. Scripture? Mr. Shepherd? Mr. Watson?
Here.
Okay, I'm going to need a motion to approve the regular minute meetings from July 10th, our last meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from July 10th, 2018.
I'll support that.
Any changes, corrections, additions, deletions? Everybody's happy with it? Okay, roll call.
Did a good job.
Roll call, please.
Yeah, it was a tough meeting.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Cussera?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Ms. Prowse?
Yes.
Ms. Scripture?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Audia?
Yes.
Item number five is consideration of a site plan approval for 303 through 305 East 14 Mile Road, proposed NOR Technologies office in the city's center district. Would our planner like to speak to this first, or just going on it?
Good evening. As we mentioned, we're here tonight to consider a site plan approval for 303 to 305 East 14 Mile Road. This is currently an existing vacant structure on the site, along with a vehicle parking lot to the east of the building. This is located between High Street and Florence on the north side of East 14 Mile, and it's in our CC zoning district. The size of the lot is actually about 11,000 square feet, and the building is approximately 4,300 square feet. So, the potential new property owners of the site are the owners and operators of NOR Technologies. They're a technology and consultant firm for architects, engineers, and construction professionals, and they would be utilizing the space for office use. So, as proposed, this use would be permitted, principal use, within the CC zoning district, so it meets that requirement. In terms of the dimensional requirements of the CC district, the building, the proposed building, does meet those standards that are our new form-based code standards. We do just note that technically there's a 10-foot rear yard setback, so this building is legally non-conforming. With regards to pedestrian access, they have two doors fronting on East 14 Mile and one door on Florence, and so therefore they will have a very good pedestrian circulation system to encourage people to access the site through walking and through other, in addition to vehicles. And there is another door on the east side of the building that provides access to the existing parking lot. So, as proposed, they are, we've had discussions with the applicant, worked with their current architect, to come up with a new revised layout. This is covered in paragraphs four and five on page two of our letter. But basically, the current configuration is perpendicular parking, fronting on the north side of the lot, with an access lane on the south side. This provided some significant issues with regards to compliance with our current ordinance because that configuration, first of all, the maneuvering lane for vehicles does not meet our standards, so modern-sized, you know, vehicles, passenger trucks especially, would have problems turning in at a 90-degree angle if the parking lot was full. In addition, there is a curb cut on High Street that's on the north end of the lot, and in order to access the drive, that drive, somewhat a vehicle traveling on the south side would basically have to cut across an existing parking lot. So, if there was a car parked there, you would result in a traffic conflict. In addition, the function of the building, there's an overhead door on the northern edge of the east elevation, and there is a trash enclosure area. So, this current configuration just really wouldn't work. Working with them, we were able to come up with a solution, just by making one revision, going through one set of revisions, I should say. So, now, as proposed, there would be angled parking, fronting on the south side of the existing parking lot. The maneuvering lane would then be on the north side, and in order to make it angled and to comply with our standards, the entrance off 14 Mile would be one-way in. The vehicle will go into the site, make a right-hand turn, head eastbound. They can either park into the angled parking spots or proceed to the High Street curb cut and exit that way. And this also will alleviate a traffic conflict on High Street because right now, if a vehicle's exiting on High Street, there's not enough space for a vehicle to stop at that stop sign without blocking the driveway. So, this way, so this proposed configuration would work very efficiently, and in addition to that, they are providing the required screening for the parking lot. It's going to be very attractive with the masonry pillars, the wrought iron fencing, and some very attractive landscaping. And so, with regard to that, they've adjusted that. And this is also in concert with the city. We worked with the engineering department to work on the curb cuts. We will also be adjusting the curb cuts to make the turning radiuses and configuration accurate. The one thing that the engineer did bring up after this revised configuration, and one of the conditions of the approval, would be that when a vehicle enters the lane, the site, the turning radius to get into that handicap parking space, which is on the far west side of the parking lot, would be very tight. So, in order to compensate for that, they would like to work with their architect to revise the distance and the angle from the maneuvering lane into that parking space. This might result in elimination of one or two parking spaces, as proposed. As proposed, they're currently at 11, but it would be in keeping, if those parking spaces were to be removed, the site would still be in compliance with our ordinance, and in addition, this site does have four, I believe it's four, parallel parking spaces on the East 14 Mile. So, it's perfect for the downtown because it also encourages people to park there, visit the site, and then if they need, want to, maybe they'll go downtown and visit some other businesses. So, the one caveat, or one condition we would suggest is going to be with regards to adjusting that per the engineer, and I'll get to that in a moment with my final recommendation. As mentioned, the loading, there is a loading area on the north end of the building. They have designated a loading zone, however, they have indicated that most of the deliveries would be through a standard UPS/FedEx delivery system where someone would, you know, utilize a hand truck at most for normal, for average-sized packages, nothing too extensive that would need to come out of a semi-truck or anything extensive like that. So, the loading works for them. Trash removal, they propose to complete the trash enclosure, to replace a decorative gate in the front of the existing trash enclosure. The only thing we do note for this is the fact that the location of the trash enclosure is very, is on the far north end of the parking lot, and it goes up against, and is actually a little angled into an existing screening wall. So, we would just ask if we can get further information to make sure that they'd be utilizing this for, it would work for their needs. And generally, I would think, because it's an office, they could possibly utilize roll-away garbage cans that would just be brought out at the time, so they would be screened, but then it wouldn't be, I don't believe they'd have a need for, you know, a three-cubic yard or 10-cubic yard massive dumpster that requires a vehicle to pull in, grab it with mechanical arms, and put it in the back. So, I believe it'll still function well for them. As I mentioned, landscaping and screening, they meet those requirements. It's going to be very attractive. The architecture of the building is pedestrian-oriented, and it is pedestrian-scaled. They will be enhancing the building with new paint and awnings, so it will become very attractive. And just two other notes is that the signage proposed does meet our location and sign area requirements. However, on the plan, on one sheet it says NOR, the other sheet says NOR Technologies, so we just need to revise that and clear, clean that up. And then finally, with exterior lighting, they do have a lighting plan proposed for some decorative sconces and some security lighting. The only thing we note is that technically, the plan itself was not labeled as to which, where the location of those light sources would be and which type, so that's, once again, a site plan informational note that just needs to be changed. So, with regards to this site plan, we believe this will create an attractive addition to the downtown and also bring the site into substantial compliance with our current zoning standards. So, we would recommend that the Planning Commission grant site plan approval contingent upon this middle of a revised site plan that would include, one, a revised parking lot layout that provides an adequate turning radius for vehicles entering from East 14 Mile to the satisfaction of the city engineer; two, includes a note indicating the type of trash removal that shall be utilized; three, accurately identifies a proposed wall sign on the structure, on the whole sheets, excuse me; four, includes a revised exterior lighting plan which indicates the location and proposed fixture type for any new proposed lighting; and finally, five, addresses any detailed comments relating to the issues identified by the city engineer. You do have the city engineer's review letter included in your packet. As I mentioned, he indicated to us the need to possibly adjust the turning radius for that handicap structure, so we defer to the engineer on that issue. And then you also have notes from the police chief, the fire chief, indicating they are basically okay to proceed with the site plan, and I do believe we have that from the TPW superintendent as well. So, with that, if you have any questions, I would be free to ask them, or if you'd like to have the opportunity for the athlete to speak.
Do you have any questions, Mario?
Yeah, I had one. Regarding that parking spot with the handicap, was there any thought given to taking those first two and splitting it and centralizing that parking place in case there's a van that goes in there, and then you could put zebra stripes on both sides?
Yes, that's a good point, and that's one of the, that's one of the aspects we'll have to revise because for a van-accessible parking, it does need to be 10 feet wide from both the, from the front to the rear. So, with that tapered parking area, that just needs to be adjusted, and we would have no problems having them do that minor site plan approval to adjust, excuse me, minor revision to the site plan to adjust it so there is an adequate van accessible.
Yeah, because then-
And safe.
Because then you could split the difference between the two spots and that-
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's, and usually that's the most efficient way to do it, to flip it like that.
Anything else?
And, oh, well, I'm on a roll here. The dumpsters on that, too, was any discussion proposed on that as far as-
I haven't-
The mobile ones?
Yeah, I haven't had an opportunity to speak to them, but I do know that they, it seems like that might work for them. I will let them adjust that, but I would think, because it's an office use for professionals, so I'm not sure they're going to necessarily need to have 10 cubic yards hauled off the site every week, so.
Right, because then that would help that zoning area, too.
Exactly, yeah.
All right, thank you, Mario. Would the applicant like to address-
Oh, I have a question.
Oh.
Two questions, actually. So, I just want to make, that alley behind there is, that's that other property? That's not-
Technically, that's a public alley owned by the city.
Okay, so that's a public alley.
Yeah.
And then, am I reading this right? They're going to paint the entire building black?
It's a shade of black. It's a Sherman woman, they did provide the color. It is relatively dark, but that is, oh, it's like a charcoal, according to the architect. It is something that's in keeping with current trends, thank you. That's the word, trends, current trends. That is what they're proposing at the moment.
Is there any color sample in the room? Pictures, shirts?
I can probably pull it up. Black around the sign, I think he's saying?
Yeah, it's a black around the sign.
In the, right here, Jim?
Oh, okay, so that would be, that's pretty-
Yeah, and that's up on the screens for you as well.
Oh, that's lighter on the screen, then.
I just have a dumb question about that. I know it's a trend, so I forget that. Just how does this darker, and it's already red, I get that, too, affect the kind of heat island effect we have going on? Doesn't that exacerbate it when we keep going dark, light-absorbing colors?
It can tend to do that, but you know, but usually, the first way that they've been trying to address a heat island issue is by going with the roof materials, going with roof materials that are either white or silver to reflect the heat. I don't know if that's proposed for this.
So, my next question is-
So, that's going to be the next question, right? And I would think that something, it would probably be more based on the condition of the roof itself and whether it needs to be replaced currently. I don't know if we have any other kind of codes or standards that require-
The roof was replaced within the last 10 years. I guess you can do a Google Earth to see what color it is. I don't remember.
I already did that. It's, it's hard to tell because it's a flat roof. I can't tell. That's why I was asking.
But generally, but while I actually do share your concerns with regards to the dark colors on the walls, however, I would think the most effective way to address that would first be to see if we, or couldn't address that with replacement of roofs as a policy for the city.
I mean, stylistically, I'm not, it's lovely. It's not a, I was just wondering, you know?
And that's why, I mean, it's, we had no comment on it. We do think it'll be very attractive. They are adding some awnings, and it's going to be pretty, a pretty good contribution. And by changing the color of the structure itself, that'll indicate to everyone within the community that this is a new user, and it's filled and active in that structure again.
And you do want heat in the winter time.
There you go. Maybe it'll cut down on the heating bills, then.
Anything else from Mario? Good, thank you.
Thank you, Mario.
Would the applicant like to address any of these issues?
So, in regards to the handicap parking space, we'll work with-
And if I might ask, who might you be, sir?
Oh, sorry. George Rose, I'm the architect.
Oh, okay.
Working with Michelle and Chad here on plans for their new building, so. I'll work with the city engineer. We'll come up with a solution for the handicap parking space and create a better turning radius for that. I think that's a pretty simple fix. Trash, we have no problem doing the roll-away containers, keep them inside that enclosed space, so we still have the decorative gate and everything on there that hides it, but they just don't want to keep the trash inside the building, so roll-away will be, you know, adequate. We just don't want to keep it in the building. Updated sign, I believe you guys are going with the one that says Technologies below, right? That was a mistake on my part, putting the other one on the elevations here. I just didn't have the right PDF for it, so the one that's on the sign plan is more accurately. That's actually a picture of their current sign, so it'll be very, very similar to that.
And that's going to be located where it's indicated on the other-
Where it's indicated on the other plan.
Okay.
So, exterior lighting, most of the lighting will be located centered between the windows, close to the doors. The front has overhangs above the doors, so we're going to do some downlighting inside of those overhangs. So, it's, you know, kind of indicated on the plan, but it's not, not really accurate at this point. We'll probably make some adjustments to that, you know, as we get more involved with the electrical and seeing how much light we need, but everything will be a covered light, you know, nothing direct light for 14 Mile, so it'll be the, you know, fixtures we indicate. And then, as far as the gray goes, we like the darker gray, but if you guys don't care for the darker gray, we are willing to compromise and go with something a little bit lighter, but we do want a gray and the awnings, you know.
My question is on a bigger level, and not suggesting you change your question.
No, I got you. As far as the heating goes, it probably does, you know, absorb more heat, but it's a block building, we're going to be insulating, you know, adding insulation to the inside, so it should be a more comfortable building than what it currently is. Roof's three years old, so I don't think we're going to have any issues with that. Got any questions?
In the process of, this building is being purchased?
Right.
Okay, and what are you looking at as a timeline as to getting in here?
We're shooting to have this starting, work starting in less than a month. We'd like to start at the beginning of next month, so.
Okay, so you still got plans to get in, if that's possible this year, yeah?
Right. We've worked, to some extent, with Jim on that. We've got some plans submitted.
His building plans have been approved, but I put the disclaimer on that it doesn't, any approval of the building plans doesn't affect a decision of this board.
Okay, good. Any other questions then for the-
How many employees do you plan to have?
You should hear what they're all about, because Mario did a nice job. Wait.
I'd like to give this architect a compliment. He had like 24 hours to 48 hours to turn all this stuff around. He came with a very good drawing, and I know he worked straight through the night a couple of nights, so.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Studer. I'm vice president of NOR Technologies. Chad Studer, my lucky husband, is president. We are NOR Technologies, so what do we do? So, we're an AEC industry-specific technology partner. We don't fabricate anything or create anything, but we take the accessible technology that's available now and stream that together to create successful workflows in that industry. So, when I say AEC, I specifically mean architects, engineer, and construction. Construction being something we're dabbling into now because Michigan infrastructure is just now getting to a point where it's booming. So, it's been predominantly civil engineering for pretty much the last six, seven years going into this. We have probably about 85% of the civil engineering business in Michigan. Started the company eight years ago in our living room and just started it on services and training in the Autodesk world. So, we are certified by Autodesk as a VAR, which is a value-added reseller. We can implement, sell, train, and support any of their software platforms. Specifically for us, we tend to privy more to civil engineers as opposed to architectural, but as the company continues to grow, we'll definitely continue to drive towards that as it grows with the Michigan economy. On top of that, we're a Leica Global HGS Gold Status distributor. What that means is we do great with Leica. We sell HGS high-definition laser scanners. So, if you were to do some sort of a renovation, you need to capture existing conditions, you could come in with a high-dollar level piece of equipment, scan the entire environment and capture what's called 360-degree point cloud. It basically puts measurement to every point that it captures, and from that, you can then do almost exact measurements within millimeters. So, as opposed to going in with a tape measure and a plumb bob, which is what my former architect did, you can go in with a scanner, and you're only going to be off a few millimeters, if that, if done correctly, it should be pretty accurate. So, this goes in and really streamlines and make the overall process a lot more efficient and effective and costly, on budget, for these high-dollar engineering projects that we get involved in. On top of that, we're also a DJI enterprise dealer, so we are authorized to sell DJI drones for commercial capacity. So, we don't sell to just a hobbyist or someone who's going to fly his backyard. We're selling to engineers, bridge inspectors, facade inspection, roof inspection, people who are out there trying to do something commercially and just make it more efficient. For example, we've done a lot of roof inspections where you fly it with a thermal camera as well as an imaging camera, so you're getting existing conditions with a camera, which is going to give you measurements. On top of that, thermal imaging, which is going to give you all of your different sources, heat source, cool spores, wet spots, so on and so forth. So, it's a little bit more of an efficient way of figuring out where my inefficiency is in my roof. What we do best compared to our competitors, we kind of compile that all together. So, if you're an Autodesk user, or an AutoCAD user, or a Civil 3D user, we're going to show you how to implement drones, how to implement the high-definition laser scanners, and how to make that a more efficient workflow overall. So, that's just a nutshell. We're Propeller Target Dealers, Pix4D, which is drone software, and pretty much any other software that we come into play with that we think is a game-changer in that everyday standardized workflow that we face with the AEC industry.
Once people hear the word drones, I think you're going to have customers walking in the door. Are you prepared to?
Quite possibly.
You're dealing with a retail market, correct?
Quite possibly. There's a DJI commercial, or I'm sorry, consumer operation opening up at 14 Mile, so I think a lot of that's going to kind of surpass us and go there. We're going to approach them for a partnership, so they'll pass commercial business on to us. They can't sell anything higher than a Phantom. You can buy a Mavic Pro, which is technically a commercial drone at Costco, so if you're looking for a Mavic, you're not quite in our ballpark in regards to industry-specific type software.
Why Claussen?
Why Claussen? Because we liked the building. It, for some reason, had everything that I was looking for. Like I said, we started in our living room, so we've grown this, we're very excited about it. Four kids later, we're looking for somewhere to kind of plant roots, and it had almost every aspect that we were looking for in regards to a layout, and it gives us great opportunity to then kind of branch out from there. Our growth is going to inquire a little bit more of headcount. Right now, we're at seven full-time employees. I'd like to be at 10 by the end of the year, if not into 2019, but after that, it will be branching out into different states, different geographical locations throughout the US. We're already an international company. We've done business in all but 15 states in the US, but we don't give up, and we don't say no, so we want to continue that growth.
She also really, really enjoyed the community, being able to have people in the office, do training, and walk around in your wallet lunch, meet in different restaurants. We could not find that-
Can you come to the microphone, please?
Sorry, she held back a little bit on Claussen. We looked at many buildings, especially in Troy, because that's a business, you know, network area that we felt everybody was at, but she liked the community, and there's nowhere else around here that you can actually have your building and have training and individuals walk around to different restaurants and walk back to our facility.
Well, good, I can tell my Troy friends, nan, nan, in here.
Yeah, yeah, it's very nice.
Tell them loud.
And sold her on that.
Where's your current building?
Troy.
Troy.
Troy, off of Kurt's Boulevard.
Oh, I think I've seen your sign.
But we do bring people into town, so we do do training, so the fact that they can walk to lunch, walk across the street and grab a coffee, obviously that draws a certain appeal to us. We sent a couple of people down just to kind of test it out to Black Lotus a few weeks ago when they were training. They were very impressed. They were from New York?
Cincinnati.
Cincinnati. So, Cincinnati is already kind of a growing company, or a growing city. I don't know if you guys have been down there lately. They've got a lot of things going in, a lot of infrastructure. For them to come back and say they're impressed with Claussen, I thought was a pretty good compliment. There's a lot of options down in Cincy, too, so it's nice to have that comparison to a smaller town.
Cool.
Questions? I do all right?
Any other questions?
No, just a comment. Going back to our historians at home, this is the old Toto Flooring Building, if I'm not mistaken, and for those real historians in our television audience, this used to be the Duncan Flowers Building.
Wow.
And prior to that, it was a farm, we're assuming?
So, farm, farm flowers, carpet drones.
You foresee no problems? We've got five items here that you have to address.
No, I've said that.
Sinage, and signage is within our confines?
Yeah, it'll work.
Everything works?
Okay.
You don't see any problem?
I don't anticipate any problems.
Okay, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome to Claussen.
Yes.
We'll make it official.
Okay, I'd entertain a motion now.
I'll make a motion to approve the site plan for 303 to 305 East 14 Mile Road for NOR Technologies. Contingent upon the five items noted on page four of the McKenna memo. Do you need me to read those into the minutes, or you've got them?
I have them.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Five items, right?
Yes, sorry, did I say four? Five items on page four.
And I'll support that.
I have a motion, I have support. Anyone want to change anything? We're all good with it? Roll call, please.
Mr. Cussera?
Yes.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Ms. Prowse?
Yes.
Ms. Scripture?
Yes.
Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Audia?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Welcome to Claussen.
Now officially, welcome to Claussen.
Good luck. Item number six is public discussions. Items not on the agenda, is there anyone from the public wish to speak?
Thank you.
Seeing no one from the public, I will close the public discussion and move on to other business.
Tomorrow, I will be inspecting Ziolis and opening up an Italian restaurant that they can send their clients to.
Did you say tomorrow's the opening?
Well, no, I'll just be doing the final inspection tomorrow.
I believe they're targeting Monday to actually open. I don't, I think that's probably their soft opening and then coordinate with Joan for a grand opening. It looks fantastic for them.
I'll just run through a few things, and then I'm sure Susie will add to it. If you notice, KFC Kentucky Fried Chicken is finally doing that facade change. So that's all tore apart and it'll be a red and white bucket, uh, building.
Jim, sorry to interrupt on this one. Actually, I was just driving down, um, Main today, past the KFC, so I noticed all the construction work happening. I, I've noticed it's going on, but, uh, something struck me today when I was driving past that they have, um, a pile of material from the building on the street with a free scrap sign on it.
Yes, I saw this, too.
That just struck me as odd.
Maybe they wanted, maybe people want KFC memorabilia.
I did, I think there was some metal.
It'll be gone. It'll be recycled.
Yeah, there, because, uh, at one point in time, I thought, uh, somebody was gonna take the bucket as a historical thing and, uh, nobody ended up taking that. So maybe I put the thought in the owner's head that maybe some people would want this stuff as, uh...
And I'm sure somebody's like, I just passed by very quickly and you don't see too many free scrap signs on, on Main Street, so. Just wanted to make mention of that.
That's trash day tomorrow, too.
They're making their way, right?
You'll find a lot of vehicles patrolling the area.
Uh, the CVS on Rochester, uh, no exterior works being done, but they're doing an interior remodel and barrier-free bathrooms and, um, doing the inside of the building. So if you see work there, that's all permitted. Uh, they're not changing the use, just, uh, changing from the 1970s layout to the 2018 layout.
Jim, does that, um, does that explain the storage containers and pallets that are out in the parking lot?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, also, I don't believe Kimball Animal Clinic had to come in front of you guys. Uh, they, the banned properties when they moved, uh, the hair salon out of there. Kimball has now moved into the remodeled side, uh, where the hair salon Fantastic Sam's is, and they're remodeling the old section and, uh, they'll be complete with that fairly soon, probably about a month from now. Uh, Fisher Agency, I believe they came in front of you a couple of times. They are four bushes and one bike, um, rack away from being complete with the site plan, so.
Are they working in a, in a jeopardy then, or?
Um, the, the office is barely occupied in there right now, yeah. There's, it's, uh, it was a development agreement, I believe, we set up with them.
Okay.
And then, um, Mike Savoy, um, they got all their engineering for the site. Uh, they bought the building for a million dollars. They're putting a million dollars into the parking lot and then a million dollars into the building. So, uh, I think we explained it when they went through the process that they had to get their engineering and it was gonna take some time, so. They have full approvals from my farm marshal and the engineering department, so you'd be seeing a lot of work on that site. And Susie, you got other good news?
Uh, let's see. Well, you guys stole my thunder on Zeoli's and you stole my thunder on KFC. Jeez. Um, let's see. Uh, the only other good news we have is, uh, CNC and 400 South Main are going to court for blight violations, so that's happening on Monday, so we'll see.
See, what, what business are you talking about? I didn't catch the name.
CNC Bump, the bump shop on Nikota.
Yep.
Um, that one, and then just, just north of that, 400 South Main, um, right there next to the Orthodontist. They're, both of those properties got blight notifications, so they're going to court on Monday and we'll see what happens.
So what does a blight notification mean that...
It means that they were cited for blight so many times on their property and they didn't do anything about it, they got a ticket.
Good, okay. Will it be able to force them to do anything, though, especially that 400 building? That's just such a...
We, we wrote civil infractions, which are mostly parking tickets, but we asked for court-ordered compliance, so it's in the judge's hands whether he uses fines or he goes with the full court order saying if you don't comply by this date, then the city hires a contractor to go in and comply.
Got it.
But then we have to collect also.
It'll just be a tax lien, so we get the money sooner or later.
Gotcha.
Um, who, who owns 400? Is that Mahmoud?
Yes. Yes.
I'm sorry, I had a thing in my throat.
Little thing, little frog. Got it, got it. Um, also, oh, I, what, uh, Sinclair Antiques, they've gotten their trees in, so now they're just, they just need to do their fence. I think we talked about that at maybe the last meeting or the meeting before, so. They're moving along.
Is, is there any result out there on the Pep Boy sign? I think that we went to court on that. I heard we're losing ground.
Uh, that was discussed at the last council meeting and, uh, in open session, they, um, uh, voted to approve what they, uh, discussed in closed session. That is still attorney-client privilege, so I can't give you any more than that.
I'm acknowledging, okay. Uh, thank you, Susie, for, uh, sending out the input. I went to the last One Stop Ready.
Oh, awesome.
I was the Claussen representative.
Thank you very much, sir.
It was an investor's perspective and it's a little bit over our ballpark. These guys are talking shopping centers and...
A little bit, a little bit.
A lot of big, big stuff. I did learn a couple ideas here and there. Like, they're, they're talking about building parking structures. And I'm finding this is interesting. They're building parking structures. Instead of angling the floors now, they put them in flat. And the reason for that is they figured that down the line, there won't be enough cars parking in the lots. The building could be easily converted over to retail use at that point.
That is, that's an interesting idea.
They're afraid to go out and take it alone for 20, 25 years because at that point in time, there might not be enough cars to park there to, to make it worth the while.
Yeah, I've seen, somewhat related to that idea is I've, I've seen some, uh, master plans for, some newer master plans for communities and they're, they talk about, they have whole sections in there. Uh, it's not in ours, but they have whole sections in there about autonomous driving and how that's gonna, autonomous driving and services like Lyft and Uber and how that's going to impact the number of cars in there. You know, estimating that these, the number of vehicles on the road is actually gonna drastically reduce, so.
Yeah, you said so, there's another one coming up in September, I think.
That one, the one coming up in September is specifically for brown, redevelopment of brownfields. Um, we don't really have a lot of brownfields. CNC Bump is, you know, probably our most...
Active.
Well-known?
Active, well-known, visible, uh, brownfield, um, that really, I mean, that one, obviously, it needs some work. I know that the, the, I believe the dry cleaner over in the Ace complex, I mean, that's being monitored. I believe it's been cleaned up to some extent years ago, but at least it's being monitored, so. It's an interesting process. I think about it, you know, mostly from the CNC Bump perspective, knowing that that's gonna be probably the biggest project that we have.
Yeah, like I said...
Coming up in the relatively near future.
Like I said, a lot of this is over our wheelhouse. There's a bigger audience than we're dealing with. But you meet interesting people. There are any good discussions going on, so if I can make the next one, I will. Uh, one question for anyone here that can answer, Motor City Barbell and Fitness Club.
Yes.
Uh, that's on 14 Mile next to the, uh...
Hart and Harlow, yes.
Hart and Harlow's.
Yes.
Did anybody look at their Facebook posting about several hours ago? They're looking for a graffiti artist. Uh, they wanna hire somebody that can do graffiti, and I wonder if the city has discussed with them. Before you just go in and paint graffiti on your wall, you should, uh, have a discussion about it.
Are they talking inside or outside?
He says he has a huge wall. I don't know which outside wall he's talking about, but he's just looking for some local...
But he could be referring to inside, though.
Possibly inside, um...
Because there, aren't they enclosed? They don't really have a, a wall, do they?
I was trying to picture if they have a...
Because they're between two buildings, they've got the...
There's an empty lot there. I'm not sure if that's one of their...
Well, the lot that's empty, though, that building that butts up against that empty lot is the, um, the clothier. He's a, um...
Oh, the tailor?
A seam, yeah, tailor, exactly.
Stitching time.
Yeah, so they don't have an open, I'm, I'm just saying.
Okay, I wasn't, I wasn't sure. I thought that maybe they were planning on painting it outside. Because we have Zeoli's put the, uh, dog on their building. Uh, the House of Plastic is gonna do their artwork on theirs. So it's, uh, yeah, it's a matter of, we gotta, we gotta keep an eye on, you know.
Well, I think that...
I don't want people to think that they can just paint something on the wall without, you know, having it checked out first.
Well, and, and, you know, don't forget, our, our policy is that if someone wants to do a mural, all they have to do is present it to you and say, "This is what we'd like to do." So I wouldn't necessarily, and don't get, don't get hung up on the word graffiti, right? Like, they do some pretty amazing art out there, so. Um, I know, well, you know, we can reach out. I've been having conversations with Justin over the course of the past few weeks anyways about other, other items, so I'll, gotta touch base with him then, so I'll be sure to remind him about bringing his pictures in before he paints.
I have to ask, how did you stumble across it? That's interesting that you would've seen that, though. What made you go to their website?
Yeah, they just posted on Facebook.
I mean, I'm looking at their Facebook page and I don't see a post.
Seven, eight hours ago, he just, he's looking for somebody that's a local graffiti artist.
You saw it in the Claussen page or on their page?
I don't know if he put, he probably posted on Claussen.
Okay, 'cause it doesn't say it's not on their page.
Got it.
I guess that was an interesting comment, you know. Uh, anybody, anything else?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, um, I'm not sure if my fellow commissioners are following along with city council's discussion about the RFP for Planning Services. Um, but since no one from, um, the staff I know that are specifically working on that are here, um, I just wanted to mention, I've been talking a little bit to Michael about sort of what they're doing and it was presented at council, a draft, I think, last week. And then they were sent back, I think staff was sent back to make some revisions and some changes, and it's gonna come back to a future council meeting. Susie, I don't know if, you know, if it's next week's meeting or a future meeting. They didn't say at the, last week.
Knowing the way that Mike works, I mean, he, and he wants to, he wants to get it done and keep that ball rolling, um, so I'm sure that he's probably shooting for the next, yeah, probably shooting for the next meeting, although, you know, he didn't tell me specifically.
Right.
But that's my guess.
So the draft that was presented last week was online with their council packets, so you could go in and see what it is that they're looking for, so I'm sure next week it will be as well. And I know, um, I have sort of offered on behalf of the Planning Commission that we'd be happy to participate in that process and we'd like the chance to either, you know, possibly review the RFP or help evaluate the bids that come back, so. I just, you know, letting everyone know kind of where they are in the process and that hopefully at some point it will come our way so that we can provide some feedback.
I think we can enter into a discussion with them, but we don't have any vote in that matter.
We don't. It'll depend on how they choose to evaluate it. I mean, they could put a bid evaluation team together that had a member or two from Planning Commission on it along with council and staff, which is very common. Um, but I think they're still trying to figure out what their evaluation processes.
Okay, anything else?
Um, are we going to look at the whole, we're supposed to be looking at the ordinances? We talked about workshops. Is there any progress, discussion, thinking of times?
Well, we did, we did send that email, uh, considering possibly looking at dedicating either the front of a meeting or, uh, maybe one of the meetings per month for that purpose. Uh, one thing I was, uh, going to be providing you with is a letter proposal that would, uh, basically be, um, a technical review of the zoning ordinance. I think that might be one way to, uh, address it. Because a lot of times when communities, uh, are done with their master plan, they realize, all right, well, this section needs to be changed and I, I don't like this definition and I want this section to address this issue. And it's one way to, to address is, um, those hot button issues. But if we do a technical review, what it would be is a comprehensive review done by, by us of, uh, the ordinance section by section, uh, and how they relate to the new plan. And then it would, uh, present a, uh, proposed schedule as to how to, uh, attack that massive job in a comprehensive way. So that's one thing that we'd be, I can present to you, uh, in your packets at the, for the next meeting. So it's something for you to consider. And, and the, at the minimum, it'll give you an outline and you can decide how we want to proceed. Do we wanna, um, do that all at once? Do we wanna, uh, you know, break that down and do it step by step? But I do think so, having something like that, that outline, that way you can, like I said, do it, take a look at it and do it step by step instead of, uh, unless you wanted to jump into, um, the hot button issues.
I think if you give us a list of bullet points that we could work off of, you know, the items that you think or that we all think are...
Besides his hot point, my hot button might be two different hot buttons and, I mean, systematic seems like a better approach than just choop, choop, choop.
Right.
And Jim, if you could, at some point, I'd like a list of everybody that's got a temporary CFO and their expiration dates. Current, current list on that if, if possible, just so we can stay on top of who's who and who's doing what.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn then.
I will make a motion that we adjourn tonight's meeting.
Support.
Motion to support. Roll call, please.
Mr. McHale?
Yes.
Ms. Prowse?
Yes.
Ms. Scripture?
Yes.
Mr. Shep, uh, Mr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Audia?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Cussera?
Thank you, everyone.